Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. We will begin tonight's meeting, this meeting of the Clovis City Commission. We'll begin with a word of prayer and immediately afterwards, we will honor our flags. Please pray with me. Father in heaven, thank you for the blessings you give us each day. You are kind and good to us and we are grateful. Father, we thank you for the wonderful community that you've called us all to live, work, and serve in. We ask your guidance for wisdom as we do the city's businesses this evening. And we thank you for the many presentations that we have this evening that celebrate the wonderful things, the good things, and the great people in our community. And we look forward to doing that. We will give you the honor and praise and glory. And I pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Please join me in honoring our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of our friendships among united cultures. Our meeting is called to order with the clerk. Please call roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Casaus?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Paula?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Appreciate that. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, next is approval of the agenda. And I know of one item that we need to rearrange if you so approve, and that's item seven within the consent agenda. We need to move that out. And I suppose we would put that in new business so it would become item one there, and then we would have four this evening. Other than that, do you recommend rearranging or removing any of the items?
Nope.
With that one change and there being no objections to that, we will adopt the agenda. And please record a yes vote for each of the members, Ms. Reyes. Next is approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the Thursday, August 18th, 2022 meeting in your packet. I assume you've had a chance to review those meeting minutes. Are there any objections to the way they're printed? Hearing and seeing none, we will adopt the minutes from the August 18th, 2022 meeting. Please record a yes vote for each of the commission members, Ms. Reyes. Thank you. Next is recognition of visitors, and it is great to see so many folks in the commission chamber this evening. I look out there and I see friendly and familiar faces, and I know you're here for presentations that we have this evening. And the first, we'll take care of the largest group that we have joining us in the chamber this evening. But what I would like to do is encourage all of you to stay for at least the presentation section of the agenda tonight, as we have several that I think are especially meaningful and you may be blessed by being here for. For example, we are giving a proclamation for Constitution Week as well as September 11th, National Day of Service and Remembrance. So you may want to stay for those, even if we've completed yours. And if you're a member of the public and you're here for another agenda item, we look forward to hearing from you later in the meeting. And we thank you all for your interest in what your city government is up to. I want to recognize that there are also folks viewing online, and we appreciate your interest in what the city is up to. Thank you. So we will move on then to proclamations, awards, and presentations. Again, we have several there this evening. The first is a fun one and an exciting one, and it is presentation of proclamation proclaiming September 16th, 2022 as Clovis High Wild Cadets Alumni Day. And Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, as you can see, we have many of, if not all, of the current Clovis High Wild Cadets in attendance. And I know that we have some former Clovis High Wild Cadets or the Wild Cadet alumni in attendance this evening. We also have the coach, the very successful coach of the Wild Cadets, Coach Cordova is here with us. And Coach Cordova, would you like to share with us this evening about what's planned? Thank you.
So before I begin, I want to thank you all for recognizing and doing this for us this evening. I did not do this alone and would like to also introduce my assistant coach, Sharon Dorman, and Coach Leslie Scroggins, who had the team before I did. And so fun fact, there's only been, as far as we know, three head coaches of the Wild Cadets in the past 50 years. And so Coach Scroggins was one, Jill Snyder started the team, and I'm the current coach. So this year marks 50 years of the Wild Cadet Dance Team. So in 1972, it was established and has been a mainstay at Clovis High School since. We're very proud of the program. And so this year, we asked, what do you think about a Wild Cadet reunion? Put it out there. And we have over 100 ex-Wild Cadets who are going to attend their reunion. The festivities start next Thursday. Coach Scroggins has very graciously choreographed a routine for us. And so all ex-Wild Cadets are learning it currently online and via video. And they're going to come in and we're going to have practice next Thursday, and we're going to get ready to perform again for Clovis High School and anyone who would love to attend that game. The following day, they're going to receive a tour of Clovis High School because many of them are coming from across the country and all over the place. Another practice, just to make sure, they will do pre-game meal with the current Wild Cadets. And so we're hoping that they will share sentiments and traditions and just what they loved about Wild Cadets when they were part of the team. Of course, we'll perform the game, there are special guests at the game, and the following night, we'll have a dinner and a dance just for the alumni. So that's what we have coming up, and we are, again, thankful and thank you for having us.
Well, appreciate you, Coach. Thanks for being here this evening, giving us the opportunity to recognize this 50th anniversary and 50th reunion of the Wild Cadets. I'll also maybe be sharing, perhaps not the whole proclamation, but I'll be attending the game where the performance will take place and letting folks know that we've marked this occasion with this proclamation. I'll share the proclamation. Whereas the Clovis High School Wild Cadets began in 1972, and whereas the Wild Cadets have provided team spirit at high school, football, and basketball games throughout the last 50 years. And whereas the Wild Cadets competed in several state competitions and brought home the state title in the years of 1976, 78, and 79 in the Class 4A Division. And whereas the Wild Cadets have competed, placed, and/or won many regional, national, and even international competitions, including the Miss USA Drill Team Competition and the Contest of Champions National Competition, where they won four years in a row. And the Miss Drill Team International in Tokyo, Japan, where they came in second place. And whereas the Wild Cadet members continue to span across multiple generations, performing at a variety of events across the United States of America, including the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and in Europe as well as in Asia. They also perform at the Pioneer Days Parades here in Clovis, the Clovis Christmas Parades, and Cannon Air Force Base air shows, and participate in community improvement projects. And whereas the Wild Cadets alumni are daughters, mothers, grandmothers, professionals, writers, managers, teachers, administrators, business owners, and dancers at heart. And whereas the Wild Cadets reunion events will begin Friday, September 16th, where they will attend and perform during halftime of the Clovis High Wildcats football game and will continue with a host of activities throughout the weekend. And whereas the Wild Cadets are truly thankful for the support of parents, family, friends, Clovis Municipal Schools, sponsors, and the community for supporting a great avenue for young people to become outstanding productive citizens. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby declare September 16th as Clovis High Wild Cadets Alumni Day in the city of Clovis. And I invite residents to join me in congratulating the Wild Cadets for their team spirit and community commitment and wish them a great weekend of celebrations during their reunion. So let's have all of the Wild Cadets, current and alumni, come and go present the proclamation. Outstanding. That was a fun one. Thank you for that, Wild Cadets. Appreciate that opportunity. Next, we have a presentation of proclamation proclaiming the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month. And this is an important one to me, as we've all become aware of the needs to normalize mental health and receiving treatment for mental health of all types. I also have some personal friends that are involved in a program here in Clovis called Celebrate Recovery. And they've asked, and I was more than happy to do this proclamation, and they're here this evening to share with us a little bit about the events that they have planned to celebrate National Recovery Month. Mr. Cipriano Martinez is here, as well as Ms. Megan Oakes. Yeah, please come up.
Well, first, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come here and talk a little bit about this and to recognize September as Recovery Month, as it is around the nation. So my name is Cipriano Martinez. I've been in recovery for 16 years. I was a recovering drug addict for 14 years, so I hit that point where I was finally recovered longer than what I was in my hurt, hang-up habit, whatever you want to call it. But I'm also here to bring awareness to all forms of recovery. Recovery has many different faces. It has faces of chemical dependency, it has faces of mental health. And a lot of mental health issues are, they come from a type of chemical dependency or maybe trauma within the home or maybe trauma in the job. You know, we are in a military community, and there's a lot of not only combat-related trauma, but trauma that comes from being in a demanding type of job. And so mental health matters. And today, I want our community to know that mental health and recovery do matter, not just in the month of September, but 52 weeks a year. We do a program, Celebrate Recovery. I started it in 2008, and I've had the honor to be the state rep for the program since 2014, which I help other churches around the area in like eastern New Mexico and west Texas, give them pointers in how to start a program like this. We have another Celebrate Recovery in town, and we've had a few more. We have one in Portales that like I had the honor to try to help start up because recovery does matter. And it doesn't only have to be in churches, there's other organizations around the community that also. So I want to recognize them also. But it's not meant to be swept under the rug, recovery. It seems like it's a bad thing, and we want people to be able to talk about it, mental health, we want people to be able to talk about it. If they're dealing with it, we want them to be able to say, hey, I'm struggling with this. It's okay to not be okay, but let's do something about it. That's the thing we need to do. And so it takes a team effort, and it takes much prayer. I'm passionate about it because whenever I was struggling, nobody came alongside of me. And so I want to be able to use my struggles to help other people. And there's are other people like that. And that's the awesome thing about recovery, people that start to work on it, they want to be able to help people that were just like them. And so again, we want to thank you guys for having us, and hopefully this right here will start this Mental Health Matters movement in our community. And if anybody has any questions in the future, I might not know all the answers, but I'm sure that we can get the answers.
Would you like to say anything?
I'll just add that between the two of us, we have over 20 years of recovery under our belt. And working alongside Cipriano for the past seven years in this ministry, it's an honor to be able to have the support of our community, to be able to acknowledge recovery matters and mental health matters. And he slightly touched on this a little bit, but I'm just going to add to it. Mental health and recovery go hand in hand because, like he said, with a chemical dependency or a substance abuse, the effect of that can be mental health. However, a lot of times what we may not realize and recognize is that addiction to a chemical dependency may also stem from something that's caused within someone's mental health. And so as long as they're working hand in hand, our hope is that we can bring hope and healing to our community as a whole through this ministry. So again, we just want to thank you guys for recognizing this.
Well, thank you for the work that you're doing and for the opportunity to help bring some attention to this. And just thank you for being here. Thanks for the work that you do. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, any comments before I share the proclamation?
Yes, Cipriano, I appreciate you. I know there's passion in both of you because you had to have been thinking about this from your waking moments because you put a shirt on today. That tells me that it wasn't just on a whim, but Clovis is better because of Celebrate Recovery and for people like you that really invest themselves in that. And I'm sure I speak for all the Commissioners, but we thank you and Clovis thanks you. It's a good thing that you're doing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Whereas the theme for National Recovery Month 2022 is recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. And whereas recovery from substance use and mental health disorders, including jointly occurring disorders, is an essential part of supporting good health and overall wellness. And whereas prevention of substance use and mental health disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in the city of Clovis and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming substance use and mental health disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must all work to recognize the signs of a problem, guide and encourage those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the National Center for Health Statistics report that deaths from drug overdoses soared to more than 103,000 nationwide last year, representing the biggest increase in overdose deaths in the history of the United States. A staggering record that reflects the crises and the continuous spread of the synthetic opioid fentanyl in the illegal narcotics supply. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the city of Clovis invites all residents to educate themselves regarding the dangers of substance abuse and to support those in need. And whereas Celebrate Recovery will host a 5K recovery run and a one-mile fun run at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 1st, at Hillcrest Park. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Recovery Month in the city of Clovis. And I urge the people of Clovis to join in the fight to prevent substance use and abuse and to support recovery efforts. Next, we have a presentation of proclamation proclaiming September 11th, 2022 as National Day of Service and Remembrance Day. And Christian Price is here this evening to receive that proclamation. And I would like to give you the opportunity to share with us anything you like, but certainly about the event that's taking place.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is the 21st anniversary of the attacks on September 11th, 2001. This is the Second Annual 9/11 Flag of Honor Memorial that we will be hosting. We hosted it last year, and it had a great turnout, and we got to honor the lives that were lost, almost 3,000 were lost on September 11th, 2001. And so we'll do the same thing again this year, but we have names of those who succumbed to their injuries or illnesses after 9/11 that we'll also recognize.
Wonderful. It's a great event, and I look forward to being there myself and participating. And I sure appreciate the effort that you go to to put it on. It really is a blessing to the community.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate that. For this proclamation, I have asked Commissioner George Jones to assist me in presenting this. I'd like to give him the floor now to make any comments and share the proclamation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Most of you know I'm retired military. This is a day that we always remember, right? Everybody knows they're watching their TV, or you heard it from a friend, and all of a sudden you rush to the TV to see what's going on. And we immediately spun up, and I worked for four days straight with about two hours sleep a day, trying to get ready for what's next, how are we going to respond to this? So Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me to participate.
Now I'll read the proclamation.
Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas in response to the tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas, community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of 9/11 as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas, the Serve America Act, approved by Congress and enacted in law on April 21st, 2009, directed September 11th to be observed and recognized as an annual national day of service and remembrance, and charged the corporation for the national and community services now known as AmeriCorps with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas, participating in service and remembrance activities on 9/11 is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including active duty and reserve soldiers and their families, veterans, and first responders. And whereas, Curry County Youth Services is hosting the Second Annual Flag of Honor Across America Memorial on Sunday, September 11th, 2022. We will gather around the Curry County Courthouse flagpole at 3:45 p.m., and the memorial will officially begin at 4:00 p.m.
Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2022 as National Day of Service and Remembrance Day in the city of Clovis. And I call upon citizens to honor the lives of those lost through participating in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. Commissioner Jones, thank you for presenting that proclamation, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have presentation of proclamation proclaiming September 2022 as National Preparedness Month. And to receive the proclamation this evening is Ms. Kelly, yep, our emergency management team, Ms. Ruth Ann Kelly and Mr. Dan Hirding, welcome, and please share with us about this.
I'm turning it all over to her tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. National Preparedness Month was created by FEMA back in September of 2024. No, not 2024, 2004. Not in the future, in the past. Emergency management uses this time to encourage the Clovis community to be prepared by creating an emergency kit and an emergency plan for their family. This year's theme is a lasting legacy. The life you have built is worth protecting. Prepare for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family. We will be having a preparedness event here at the library next Thursday, September 15th, at 6:30. We will give some examples of what can be in your emergency kit and answer any questions that the public might have. We also encourage everyone to visit our social media for information on creating a kit and a plan. You can find us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter by searching for Clovis NMOEM. And you can also find information at ready.gov.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate that. And Mr. Hirding, thank you as well, even though you, as you said, you let her do it all. But you know, we're grateful to you and for the work that you do in emergency management on our behalf and just for the public's benefit. And as a reminder to everyone, you serve both Curry County as well as the city of Clovis with the work that you do. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, well, we certainly appreciate you, and thanks for the work you're doing to help us all think about being more prepared. And to help with this proclamation, I've enlisted Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank you as well. I think it's important that we do prepare for emergencies, and you all continue to help us with that and make sure you give that out to the community and, you know, give them thoughts on how to prepare. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Proclamation. Whereas, emergencies and natural disasters can strike any home and any family at any place and at any time. Being prepared with plans and supplies is one of an individual's best changes for survival. And whereas, only 48% of the American households surveyed have developed an emergency plan. 81% report having disaster supplies at home, and 65% report having sought preparedness information. And whereas, each year since 2004, the Federal Emergency Management Agency sponsors National Preparedness Month in September to encourage Americans to improve those statistics and become more involved in community preparedness. And whereas, this year's theme is a lasting legacy, encourages Americans to prepare for disasters in order to create a lasting legacy for them and their family. And whereas, the city of Clovis supports preparedness for all hazard emergency situations through detailed through detailed planning, training exercises, and equipment appropriations for response citywide, in addition to collaborating with state, federal, and other local agencies for assisting and funding in case of disasters.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the Clovis City Commission, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Clovis, and I encourage all residents to create a disaster supply kit, create family emergency plans, not only during September, but all year round to protect their families and homes. Thank you. Lastly, in presentations this evening, we have, in my humble opinion, a very special one, one that we should all make note of, and I'm glad to have asked Commissioner Garza to help with this presentation, but this is Presentation of Proclamation Proclaiming the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Clovis. And just a moment, do we have someone here that's receiving this proclamation this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I think all these people present here are the ones that can receive it.
They're gonna receive it. I agree, Commissioner, I'll give you the floor.
Because it pertains to everybody here. If you know the Constitution and you are willing to protect the Constitution, then all these people are here to do that. So, thank you for being here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, Commissioner Garza, I believe that somebody from the Daughters of the American Revolution are here. Nancy?
We can do that. Awesome.
Ms. Streesman, is that right? Streesman? Yeah, would you like to come and share with us? Thank you for being here, and we'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Pat. Oh, the irony of receiving this proclamation today, seeing as, you know, England lost her queen, which of course, our constitution was largely based off of the Magna Carta or their public, you know, their constitution. So, but, thank you for joining with Daughters of the American Revolution and Children of the American Revolution in acknowledging the importance of Constitution Week. Constitution Week helps us to learn about the Constitution. It helps us to pursue interacting with teaching our youth about the Constitution.
Very good. Well, thank you for being here to share with us and allowing us to be a part of this and to help highlight the importance of understanding the Constitution and teaching it, as you say. So thank you very much for that. And again, I'll let Commissioner Garza share that with us this evening.
Proclamation. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is feeling improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week.
Thank you, Commissioner. And now therefore I, thanks. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, New Mexico, and on behalf of the Clovis City Commission proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in the city of Clovis, and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in the 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thanks again, Commissioner Garza, appreciate you presenting that. That completes this section of the agenda, and we will now move into receipts of petitions and communications, and of course...
Can I speak?
Sure. Yes, in fact, we just, we're making our way into receipts of petitions and communications, and this is the time where members of the public can bring whatever they like before the commission. If you would like to come forward, sir, please do so. And for the record, because this is a public meeting, we need you to state your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is George Pistak, and I live at 1300 Mora.
Thank you.
I spent most of my life in Ohio. In March of 2020, I purchased a home here in Clovis, and I call Clovis my home now, and I'm happy to do so. It's interesting what's on, what came ahead of me here. We talked about the Constitution and Preparedness, and those are both issues that I'm trying to address here, and you people are all involved. I have to start out by saying that I know that I'm not politically correct, and that I'm gonna offend some people, so I apologize right now, okay?
Fair enough.
All right. I'm not one to hold back. I say what I mean, and I mean what I say. If we look around the world today, things are not so good. Look at Western Europe. They're gonna have a cold winter, people in Western Europe are really suffering. They're paying about a dollar an hour for a kilowatt hour of electricity. Can you imagine what that does to businesses? They're shutting down all over the place in Western Europe. Here in our own country, it seems like every Saturday night, there's a fire somewhere destroying a facility that produces food, or a refinery catches fire. They're destroying our food supply, intentionally reducing it. This is going on all over the world, these things are happening, okay? Now, you talk about Preparedness. I tried to get prepared, you know, back in February when I see what's coming. I bought chickens, all right? You've got an ordinance here to prevent people from owning chickens, it's ridiculous. The ordinance is written up in such a way that I believe less than 3% of the people would be able to meet the requirements to own a mere 25 chickens. One in 40 would be able to meet the requirements to own chickens? That's unconstitutional, if you ask me. I can't see how this can be on the books, you know? It pleases me to know, and that you invite God to join us here at these meetings, all right? But I have to wonder, did anyone ask, what would Jesus do when you passed this ordinance banning chickens here in the city of Clovis? This is what I have to say.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comments.
I'm asking you to rescind this unlawful, ungodly ordinance. That's why I'm here, and I'll be back until it's removed. Jared Norris? I'm on your, I'll be meeting with you October 12th over chickens. The city of Clovis shouldn't be involved in regulating chickens. I think it's, you know, this is, the world we live in now, you need more people like me who are willing to raise chickens, because the food supply is being destroyed intentionally.
Well, thank you for your comments. I think we understand what you're asking and your position. Appreciate you being here this evening. Is there anyone else that has something they would like to bring in front of the commission this evening? We did have, as you can see, one planned presentation here from the branding folks, the branding action team. However, we're gonna get that at a future meeting, but while we are in receipts of petitions and communications, I thought we'd take the opportunity to just mention a couple of things going on. One would be Wings and Wheels, which is coming up the first of next month, October 1st. I'm looking over at our airport director, Mr. Harris, to just kind of get a nod and confirm for me. I believe that's, yeah, why don't you share with us about that, Mr. Harris?
The Wings and Wheels fly-in, we started last year to reintroduce the Clovis Regional Airport to the community. It was pretty successful. This year, we're planning on twice as many airplanes, twice as many cars, and hopefully twice as many of the community to come out and enjoy the airport.
Very good. Well, it was a great event last year, and I have no doubt that it'll be bigger and better this time, so thanks for putting it on, and thanks for letting me put you on the spot a little bit there.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, if I may, we are still looking for vendors, so if anybody would like to come in and vend at the event, please contact the city manager's office at 763-9654. Many thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that. And Ms. Burrows, I might lean on you a little bit. I wanted to mention the Love the Zoo activity that's coming up. Could you highlight that for us?
Certainly be happy to. We are going to love on the zoo September the 24th from 8:00 until noon. We have various activities that we'd like some help with from the public, and I believe we have several organizations that have already signed up to join in the fun. So just like to invite the public to please come and help us, help us further improve our zoo for the public.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Burrows, appreciate that. Lastly, on my list of things to mention, I wanted to mention to the public that we have just finished plans to hold the first of what I envision to be a series of neighborhood meetings out in the community, and the first one will be held on Tuesday, September 20th, at St. John's, or St. John Baptist over on Heela. This is, of course, taking place in southwest Clovis, and that's in City Commission District 3. However, residents from any part of the city are invited and welcome to attend. There was a press release done earlier with more information, but I would just say that, you know, this is the result of a couple of things. One, a desire that I've had to do that for quite some time, but the first good little bit that I was in office, we were doing COVID and all of those things, and so now we have the opportunity to meet, and we want to do that. Also, it's been in conversation with folks, in conversation with some of the folks that gave public comment at the last meeting. I followed up with each of those folks and had meetings, and I want to thank Commissioner Paula, because she actually helped, she did that with me. We had some meetings following the last City Commission meeting with members of the public. I had great conversation, and we just want to take that conversation out in the public and have more of it. So Commissioner Paula, thanks for your help in planning and preparing for this public or this neighborhood meeting that's taking place on the 20th over at St. John Baptist. Anything else while we're in communications? Yes, Ms. Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. Trek for Trash is coming up, so while we're looking for volunteers to help with activities, Trek for Trash is scheduled for Saturday, October the 15th between 8:00 AM and noon, starting at 500 Sycamore, so we're always looking for folk and groups from the community to come and help beautify the town if they would like to do that. And again, they can contact, oh, this time it's 769-7870, that's Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that reminder. We need to make plans to do Trek for Trash. Anything else while we're in receipts? All right, hearing and seeing nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, as you know, we have the consent agenda for those routine items that you can, or that you may wish to approve or acknowledge with one motion. If there's not unanimous approval for the items being placed on the consent agenda, we will take an item off and hear it under the regular agenda. As was mentioned, when we were approving the agenda, you now just have seven items on tonight's consent. The first is the motion to place, the seventh would be the motion to approve or acknowledge, I'll read two through six. Item two, request for approval of adoption of Resolution Number 3155-2022 pertaining to meetings of the City Commission of the city of Clovis, New Mexico, pertaining also to meetings of any board, commission, or other policymaking body of said city prescribing public notices to be given for regular, special, and emergency meetings of said city commission and any of said boards, commissions, or other policymaking bodies declaring the prescribed notices to be reasonable notice as required by Sections 1015-1 through 1015-4, NMSA 1978, and containing a repealer clause. Item three, request for approval of renewal of contract between Target Solutions Learning, excuse me, Target Solutions Learning LLC and Clovis Fire Department. Item four, request for approval of inter-local agreement between the city of Clovis, New Mexico, and Curry County for JAG Award Number 15PBJA21GG01694JAGX. Item five, request for approval to waive dumping fees at the Clovis Regional Landfill for Clovis-Curry County residents from noon Friday, October 14th to noon Monday, October 17th for the Trek for Trash cleanup. Request includes that dumping of tires be allowed by residential customers only, but limited to nine passenger vehicle tires per household. Item six, request for approval of adoption of Ordinance Number 2180-2022 authorizing and approving a water project, water project fund loan grant agreement between the New Mexico Finance Authority and the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority, and joined by its members, the communities of Clovis, Portales, Texaco, and Alida, in an amount not to exceed $14,510,522, including a loan amount not to exceed $1,451,052, and a grant amount not to exceed $13,059,470 for a water project phone, excuse me, this is a, this is a long one, guys, water project fund loan grant number WPF 5667 to finance the design, completion, and construction of a portion of the Eastern New Mexico Rural Water System Pipeline, Phase Labeled Finished Water 1, and other details concerning the loan grant agreement delegating to certain officers of the city authority to determine the final terms of the loan agreement, subject to the parameters established in this ordinance, including the principal amount, term, interest rate, and certain payment terms ratifying actions heretofore taken, pledging the local contributions of the city to the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority to payment of the loan, creating a lien on the net system revenues of the city sewer utility system to secure payment of the local contributions of the city and to secure payment of the loan, repealing all action inconsistent with this ordinance, authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the loan grant agreement, and confirming matching funds for the Finished Water 1 project. That is your consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
So moved.
Motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote came from Commissioner George Jones, second came from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote.
There, there we go.
Here we go. And the vote is unanimous, and the motion is carried, but just for fun, I could read the consent agenda again if you want. All right, I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner George Jones, second from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. please vote. And the vote's unanimous, the motion is carried. Thank you. We will move on to introduction and adoption of resolutions and ordinances where we have one item this evening. And that item is request for approval of adoption of resolution number 3154-2022, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for financial assistance for fiscal year 2024 under 49 USC 5311 of the Federal Transit Act, and to accept funds when awarded, and authorizing the mayor to act as the city, or as the City of Clovis's chief executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to this grant program, and authorizing a letter of support to advise this evening. We have our, our CATS Director, Ms. Kemp, and also with her is Mr. Johnson. Please, please take the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you tonight. We're here tonight to ask for your support of our annual CATS grant application for fiscal year '24. But before we go over our request, I'd like to take just a few minutes to go, to kinda give you an overview of our funding for those who are new on the commission. Our application to the DOT is for federal funds for administration, operating, and capital expenses. Administration is normally funded at a match of 80/20, operating at 50/50, and capital at 80/20. Our grant year follows the federal fiscal year, which is October to September. Even though the past three years has been really difficult for everyone, including transit, we've been fortunate in that the federal government has provided 100% reimbursement since March of 2020, and I'm not sure that you were aware of that. In fiscal year '20, out of a total budget expended of around 793,000, we were reimbursed 679,000. In fiscal year '21, we were reimbursed 100% of the total budget expended, which was around 761,000. This fiscal year, although we have not finished the year, which will end the end of this month, we estimate that out of 739 expended budget, we will receive around 697 reimbursement. In the past, that means in the past three years that our grant funds have been reimbursed, have reimbursed the city at 93%. This October 1, next month, we will go back to our regular funding reimbursements, which again is admin, 80/20, operating 50/50, and capital 80/20. So tonight, we're gonna seek your permission to file our fiscal year '24 grant application, and we ask for your support for approximately $458,000 in city match. This will fund operations and a request for capital to replace four of our, four automatic gate operators. We will have been in the building now for 15 years, and it's time to do some upgrades. We also are asking for the purchase of a riding lawnmower with attachments. And with that, we'll stand for questions. And if you have any fiscal questions, then Gary can respond.
Fair enough. Well, thank you for, for that explanation on, on this agenda item, and thanks generally for all that you do with, with CATS. We, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And maybe there will be a tough question that we can get Mr. Johnson to answer for us. But Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, comments?
If a train leaves the station at, no. No, I just wanna say.
How about if a bus leaves?
No, thank you guys for putting this together. I mean, you guys do an excellent job on.
Thank you.
Going after monies and getting them. That's, that's the key. So, thank you. Good job.
Very good. Do we have a motion related to this item?
So.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
From Commissioner Garza, and a second from Commissioner Jones. Any further debate or discussion? Let's, let's call the vote. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Casaus is away, so I wonder if that's.
She'll be here, yes.
I call, I call for the vote.
Let's call the roll here.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryant?
Yes.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Commissioner Garza?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowley?
Yes.
Commissioner Paula?
Yes.
By a vote of seven in favor, and one, one Commissioner absent for this vote, the motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Nothing to deal with under unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to new business, where the first item we'll take up will be the item that was number seven in the consent agenda, and it is request for approval of adoption of advertising fees for the Clovis Regional Airport. And for that, we'll go to Mr. Harris. However, before I give you the floor, I will mention that this was an item that the Civil Aviation Board took up and, and discussed and made recommendation on this week, on Tuesday evening. And with that, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Yes, we, we took it to the Civil Aviation Board, which made some recommendations. We initially, since it's our, our first dip in the pool on advertising at the airport, figured I'd start low, see how it does, and then slowly increase it to, you know. The Civil Aviation Board advised that we bump up the charge for the advertising to $50. So today, that's what I'm requesting. So out at the airport, you know, I try to, I like to make money. So, one, one avenue that I feel is, is a good way to go is advertising. We get asked questions, the same three questions almost 50 times a day. They want transportation, they want food, and they wanna know about lodging. I think that would be a good stepping stone to get into more advertising for, for Clovis. So we have these digital screens in the terminal, and our IT department set it up to where it's on 20 slides, one slide per minute. So you get, if you advertise for one slide, it'll be once every 20 minutes, they'll see your ad, or poster, or whatever you wanna advertise, and that'll run all day. So when I, when I crunch the numbers, because I know you all are gonna ask me questions, I did it on my own. So our conservative average for passengers on flights is 25. We have four flights a day, that's 100. So seven days a week, four flights, that's 700 bucks. So that'll give us potential, people seeing advertisements on those screens is 2,800 a month. And that's just the terminal. My plans are to put, excuse me, sorry, I've been on a mower all day, so my, my allergies are kicking up. We're gonna put two screens in the FBO and another one in the terminal. So that's not including the people that come to, through the terminal, the, the FBO, who are just private pilots. They come in for gas, and they want something to eat. Normally, they say, hey, where are we gonna eat? And favorite place? Let's send them to Leal's, or, or Juanito's, or Twin Cronies. So this way, it gives other businesses in Clovis an opportunity to advertise at the airport. Pilots fly in, they can see what, what Clovis offers, and they don't have to ask us where to go. So we're asking for, to charge $50 a month, and that's kind of a probationary number, just to see how it does. And that'll give you one slide every 20 minutes for that entire month.
Very good. Well, thank you for, for that explanation, Mr. Harris, and, and I'll just, I'll follow up on that. Commissioners, you see that the, the action request that ended up in your agenda is actually asking for $100 a month, but that must have been kinda when you were doing a placeholder for, for the agenda. But as Mr. Harris said, what he presented to Civil Aviation was $25 a month. Civil Aviation Board actually discussed that that might be too low, and, and is recommending to you approving $50 a month for, for advertising out there. And, and this is a, a, kind of a, a trial run to see how it goes, but as the airport continues to grow, that, that could be a, a potential, you know, significant revenue source for the airport. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the $50 advertising fee.
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Casaus. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, what is before you is approval of adoption of $50 advertising fees for Clovis Regional Airport. Please vote. And the vote is unanimous, the motion is carried. Thank you, and thanks again, Mr. Harris. Appreciate you, sir. We'll move on to the second item under new business. It is request for approval of public water system binding commitment letter for DW 5861 between the City of Clovis and the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. And we have with us here this evening the administrator from the Water Authority, Mr. Orlando Ortega. I might check with Mr. Ortega. Did you want to advise on this?
Mayor Morris and members of the City Commission, this, this item here is in regards to the $15 million loan that the City of Clovis is working with, with the New Mexico, New Mexico Environment Department with the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. And as you all are very familiar and aware, this is the $15 million that the City of Clovis is upfronting for their, their match, or their portion of their match for the completion of the Eastern New Mexico Rural Water System. With that said, this, this binding commitment letter comes to you for your consideration of approval to the terms and conditions of this loan. And the terms and conditions of this loan include a, an interest rate of one quarter percent and a 1% origination fee. So a lot of other details involved with this loan, but it's very typical of a drinking water state revolving loan. This is tier two funding, so it certainly has allowed us to, to lock in on this low interest rate. So that has been a blessing to not only the City of Clovis, but also to the authority, as the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority is also borrowing $32 million with, of this same account, or this same fund. So with that said, we're open for questions, if you have any. I'm glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, and appreciate you giving us a, a little bit of an explanation. And if I, if I may just add to it before there's maybe some questions or comments on this. You know, Mr. Ortega, obviously administrator of the, the Water Authority, he's here to advise us on this. He's, he's working really closely with the New Mexico Finance Authority on, on, on a loan, exactly like ours, but for a different amount, that the Water Authority is, is taking out. And so you have the, the New Mexico Finance Authority now looking at the two loan applications. They require the same readiness to proceed items in order to move through the process and get these loans to closing. And so they're, they're, they're really communicating to the City of Clovis and the Water Authority at the same time, and with one voice, really, to say, here are the things that we need for these loans. And, and so that's, that's why, and, 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 you know, perhaps I'm assuming too much, but I thought you might be confused, you know, why it is, and especially when you read the letter. You know, it, it appears as though they're talking about the Water Authority taking out a $15 million loan. They're not. The City of Clovis is. However, it's for the, for the benefit, and, and those funds are going to the Water Authority. So that may be more explanation than was even necessary, but what, what questions or comments do you have on this item, folks?
Mayor Morris and City Commission, I'd like to add that your city manager has been very involved with the communication. And in fact, we coordinated today and, and on some details of, of this loan, and, and we're, we're set to work together as, as a partner on this moving forward. So today's binding commitment letter is only agreeing to the terms and conditions of this loan. There will be more of this loan agreement come before you at a later date.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out.
And Mayor, and to add upon that, I have spoken with our bond counsel, Mr. Muirhead, and he has spoken with Richard Virtue, who is the bond counsel for the New Mexico Finance Authority. And those two parties do agree as far as how we separate the pledge ordinance from the bond loan closing documents. And so I've encouraged them and asked them to make sure that we can have those available for your consideration at our next City Commission meeting.
Appreciate that. So we're, we're drawing close to the end on, on this, this process. But this step before you this evening that, that, that you're being asked to approve is, you know, it's, it's just an item on the checklist, if you will, to move closer to the loan closing. Questions, comments, discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Second.
Second from Commissioner George Jones. Unless there's any further debate or discussion, and I'm not hearing or seeing any, Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is eight to zero, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Ortega, for being here to help us with this one.
Sure, glad to.
Thanks for all you do. Okay. Next item under new business is request for approval of budget transfer for the 2022 Wings and Wheels Fly-In, and to advise Ms. Burrows, or maybe Mr. Harris. Ms. Burrows?
Or maybe Ms. Red.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. We, as Mr. Harris said earlier, very excited to be holding the Wings and Wheels on October the 1st, but we would like some advertising funding, if possible, to promote the event. This is for, to push it out on the, on the radio, on Facebook, Canon, on, with their various platforms that they have to purchase t-shirts and various other items, water, et cetera, for the event. Thank you.
Thanks for that. So the $7,500 being transferred, is that being transferred within the existing airport budget, or is that coming from somewhere else? Can, can you?
With, whoops, sorry, within their budget, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just appreciate that clarification. So it's being, it's money being moved within the existing airport budget, regional airport budget. Any questions or comments on that?
I just have, I have a question. Just out of curiosity, how come this can't come from lodgers tax?
That is a great question, Commissioner Paula.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Commissioner Paula?
Sorry.
Great question. It's, it's, our local events at the City of Clovis hosting eligible for lodgers tax, yes, we could go in and make application for them. However, it's always kinda been our position that if it's our event, we should just fund it for the advertising of it. That way that those lodger tax dollars are available for organizations outside of the City of Clovis to become and apply for.
Okay.
And I think that's a great answer, Mr. Hawalt.
Thank you.
Glad you asked the question, though, Commissioner. So we had a motion for approval on this item from Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion or debate? Second from Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none, Commissioners, please vote. Unanimous vote and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next, uh, or last item is, uh, request for approval of acceptance of SS Clovis Victory Artifact from the Maritime Administration. This is a fun one. I'm excited about this one. Uh, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to, to discuss it in detail, but I will tell you, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, I, I get, I get a fair amount of mail, uh, to the mayor, you know, of, of, of Clovis and sometimes it's, you know, it's not something that's, you know, particularly pertinent or whatever. And so, uh, but I opened a letter a while back and, and read into it and it was from, uh, the Maritime Administration, uh, telling, making me aware of this, um, this nameplate or placard uh, from a ship that was named for our city. Uh, in what year? Do you, I just, I was so busy before today's.
It was built in between nineteen forty-four and nineteen forty-five.
Nineteen forty-four is what I'm being told. And I think that that ship was decommissioned and unfortunately I think they get scrapped when they're decommissioned, but in around seventy-one or seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So fifty years ago, this ship, uh, was decommissioned and, um, but it, it was, it was named for our city. And, and they're, and they're offering us the, the, the nameplate. And, uh, I think there's only one answer to that, to that offer, but, uh, Ms. Burrows, did you have anything else to share on this?
Um, just to add, um, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, the, the nameplate weighs about twenty pounds, is eleven and a half inches by fourteen inches. And I had spoken, well, we've just been discussing internally where would be an appropriate location for such an artifact. And, um, um, Ms. Hinchey has very kindly said that she would be willing to house it at the, at the library. If we were to receive it, um, whether they would actually give it to us, we wouldn't have it on loan.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and, and they're offering to give it to us, isn't that right?
That's, that would be their preference.
Donating, yeah, they're donating it to us. So, so that's, uh, that's what's before you, uh, this evening is, uh, approving acceptance of this artifact. And, uh, and I agree, the library would be a, a wonderful place for that. Out in the hall there, you have the flags from the different, uh, the different war, uh, uh, veteran, uh, flags. And I think that, that this would fit very well and be a nice piece in the library. Um, although that, that part can still be up for discussion, but, uh, what do you think about accepting this donation?
Um, that's great. I'm for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah. Motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Jones. Uh, Commissioners, please vote.
And Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, while you guys are voting, uh, we did fact-check and make sure that they meant Clovis, New Mexico and not Clovis, California when we originally received the letter. And, uh, based off some Google research, uh, it, it's an actually interesting story, so you may look it up if so choose.
Yeah, it, it is an interesting story and you, you do want to, you do want to look that up and, and we'll do a good job when we're, um, you know, when we have a ceremony, when we're, we place it, uh, in the library, if that's the case. Uh, but, uh, but I believe it was named after the City of Clovis because, uh, the wife of an admirable, admiral. Uh, uh, anyway, uh, it's, it's a great story. Look forward to, uh, learning more about it and us, us all sharing it and sharing that with the community. The vote's eight to zero and the motion is carried. Next, we'll move on to reports of boards, officers and committees. I have to ask your forgiveness, or perhaps you will applaud, but, uh, I'm not going to give you a long report on the Water Authority meeting, uh, that took place on August, uh, twenty-fifth, except to say that it did. And, um, we are now holding those board meetings in the other end of this building, in the Ingram Room, uh, with the exception of one, uh, conflict in the, the future, um, where we will just move into this room. Uh, again, once a quarter, we do meet at other member communities, so we do have meetings in Portales, uh, and Alida, uh, periodically, uh, as well as in Texaco when we do have a Texaco board member. So, uh, just, just be aware that we're, those board meetings are even easier for, for you and the public to, to drop in on and attend. Uh, the, the Water Authority is, 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 as, as I've reported over and over to you, very busy. Uh, uh, activity ramped up, engaged in all phases of the project. Um, and, uh, Mr. Ortega, um, and our attorney and engineer, um, administrative staff, and then I was able to go along with them, held a meeting in San Hoan a couple of Mondays ago, where we provided the folks in Quake County with an update on the project. And, but then Mr. Ortega and Mr. Barnett also took them through a really great overview of the easement acquisition process. There were several landowners there, approximately thirty folks attended. And, uh, so, so that was a good thing. That was a, that was a positive meeting with our neighbors down in Quake County. And, um, and we're committed to, uh, completing this project, but we're also committed to doing that in a way that we all remain good neighbors. And, uh, again, the, uh, the, the project is, is moving along. I'll give you a better report next time. Uh, next we have a report, uh, or perhaps many of you would like to report, uh, on the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference that, that most of us attended, uh, last week, August thirtieth through September second. Would anyone like to share?
Yeah, I'll just mention that, uh, uh, I think that's my thirteenth one to be at. And, uh, I thought it went very well. I thought the seminars were good, they were well-attended. And, uh, you know, they kept your attention. So I thought it went real well.
Yeah.
Glad, I was glad everybody was able to attend.
Yeah, yeah, we had great representation from Clovis and, um, you know, I think we all, um, all learned, learned a lot. I, I, I enjoyed a year ago where we had a whole lot more policy discussion, uh, you know, with what proposed legislation may mean or not mean for, for cities and, and things like that. So I, I appreciated that last year. Uh, there was less of that this time around. However, I agree with you, it was a good, you know, it was a good meeting. And, uh, I always benefit from the networking, uh, talking to leaders from other municipalities around the state and, and hearing their ideas and, and, and sharing stories is, is always beneficial.
I would like to mention one thing, you know, I know next year it's in Farmington, which is a pretty good length away. But are we looking at possibly hosting the next one after this Farmington?
Um, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners, um, Mayor Pro Tim Bryant, we, I did actually speak with Mr. Forte while we were at the conference because Farmington, uh, responded to the bid, uh, they're the last one to, to have the bid. So we, they're going to be going out for bid shortly. And if you like, I can bring a commission action item to you to ask for the City of Clovis to respond to that and make a recommendation for the following year.
I'm just thinking, you know, over the years, uh, since we had our last one, we still hear comments from people of how much they enjoyed coming to Clovis for the conference. So, uh, I think it would be, uh, you know, I think it'd be a very welcome event.
I agree. I would like to, I'd like to see it in, in Clovis next time, too. So, thank you for that. Anyone else like to comment on the league conference? All right.
I would like to say that, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Garza represented Clovis very well in, in the golf tournament. Along with, uh, Mayor Vaughn, uh, Roman Garcia, uh, we took first place, so. And thanks to Mr. Jones, he performed very well.
Glad you guys enjoyed the golf outing. That, that's great.
Congratulations.
And congrats on the win, yeah. Thanks for representing well. All right, next, uh, Civil Aviation Board met earlier this week. I alluded to that earlier when we were talking about the, uh, the item pertaining to the airport. Uh, the, the, the board met and, um, heard reports from our airport director. Also had several, uh, or a handful of discussion items. Uh, one was, uh, the airport director who, if he wishes, he can, if you want, you can take over. Uh, but he, he has a, a plan to offer more, um, uh, retail merchandise, oil, those kinds of things. And, uh, so we had discussion around that. Would you like to share anything from the meeting?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioners. Uh, yes, so, um, as an FBO, pilots look for us to offer items. Um, s- like oil. Airplanes use a lot of oil. Uh, some just leak, some burn it, it, you know, it, it could go either way. But, uh, pilot comes in and he's down a couple of quarts of oil. He wants to fill them up. That's something that we can provide. Um, we're looking at doing a twenty percent markup. Um, during my research, I found that twenty percent is kind of the, the average markup. Um, so that's going to be on a future agenda item.
Yeah, yeah. And so we can, we'll, we'll, we can discuss those details when that comes before the commission. But suffice to say, the, the board did make some recommendations that will be coming your way pertaining to that, uh, as we did, uh, the, the item that you approved this evening. And so, um, the enplanements, uh, Mr. Harris reported to us. You want to tell them how many folks have, uh, taken advantage of the flights?
Uh, right now, our numbers for the year is eight thousand four hundred and sixty, I believe.
Four hundred and seventy-eight is what you told us the other night. So, eight thousand four seventy-eight.
Yes. I was close.
So through August, eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight, some quick math tells you, you just need about one thousand five hundred and twenty-two more enplanements and we break the ten thousand goal.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. Yeah, which is awesome. Yeah, it's great. Uh, great, great news, uh, taking place at the airport. So, um, next, do we have future agenda items, although we've just sort of spilled the beans on future agenda items. But, uh, Ms. Burrows or Mr. Hawalt?
I'm just pulling it up, sorry, Mayor. Um, Ms. Lansford will be at the next commission meeting to give that presentation.
With the Clovis Action Team, uh, report, yeah.
Some recommendations from, uh, Mr. Harris regarding the, uh, sale of items in, at the FBO.
Right? Yep.
I think we have a liquor license, don't we? Yes, we do. Texas Roadhouse Liquor License will be on the next agenda. And currently I just have the lodger tax disbursements, that's, that's what we have at the moment. Thank you.
Very good. And hopefully the closing on the fifteen million dollar loan, right?
Fingers crossed.
We're pushing for it. Okay.
We're pushing for it.
Very good. We'll continue to work on that. All right, um, announcement of date, time and place of city, board and commission meetings. Revenue Review Committee, um, you'll want to make note of that. I, I know, uh, at least four of you would want to. Uh, Revenue Review Committee, uh, five-thirty PM, uh, Monday, September twelfth, here in the North Anx. Lodger Tax Advisory Board, five-thirty PM, Tuesday, September thirteenth. Planning and Zoning Commission, three PM, Wednesday, September fourteenth. Parks Recreation and Beautification Committee will meet at five-thirty PM on Monday, September nineteenth. And the next Clovis City Commission meeting is at five fifteen PM on Thursday, September twenty-second, here in the North Anx. Thank you. We are adjourned.